Recording in progress.
Okay, and I have six thirty, so we will get going. Greetings. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commissioners are participating this evening. Let the record show, we have Commissioners Glenn Winkle, Lawler, Nye, Winter, and a call on the call right now. We anticipate Commissioner Ellis may be joining shortly. So we are now at Commission Communications. Commissioners, do you have any communications this evening? I see, head shaking. Nope. Alright, so how about staff communications? Staff, do we have any communications?
Good evening, Chair and Commission. This is Anna Slatinsky, the Planning Division Manager here at the City of Beaverton. I do not have any staff communications tonight.
Alright, thank you, Anna. Alright, the first, we'll move on to new business, and the first item on the agenda is the application for LU three, three, two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero eight three three, the Peter Court Starbucks phasing case file number DR three, two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero eight three two. The applicant has the burden of providing the applicant application, provide, excuse me. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, a comprehensive plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing are Development Code Sections forty point zero three point one, Facilities Review Committee, and forty point twenty, point fifteen, point three C, Design Review Three. Testimony arguments and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? Commissioner, a call? I cannot hear you, Commissioner, a call?
None to all three?
Oh, there we go. Heard you that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
No to all three.
Commissioner Lawler?
No to all three, but I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Nye?
No to all three.
Commissioner Winter?
Like Commissioner Lawler, I'm familiar with the site, but no to the other questions.
Alright, and I will say no to all three for myself as well. And does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits, or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate this evening? That shows that there is none, so let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given twenty minutes for its presentation, followed by the commission's questions of the applicant. The members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then, members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. And then, members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will now have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We will now begin with the staff presentation.
Just one moment. Wasn't the correct screen to the second? Are you seeing my presentation? I don't think you are.
We, we are.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Alright. Well, greetings Chair and Commissioners. I'm Aaron Harris from the City of Beaverton Community Development Department. And my presentation this evening is for LU three, two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero eight three three, Peter Court Starbucks Phasing, Land Use Application DR three, two thousand twenty-three, zero zero eight three two. This slide provides, oh. Is my screen changing? Do you see the, do you see the next slide? The project summary slide?
It's still on the cover.
Okay, there we go. Does that look better?
Yes.
Great, okay. This slide provides an overview of the proposal. The proposal is to allow two-phase construction of a previously approved, single-phase development. In addition to dividing the project into two phases, the applicant also proposes minor facade changes to the previously approved Sunrise Bagels building, moving the location of a transformer, and modifying an associated landscape planner, and modifying the existing landscape plan to change some of the proposed plantings. This slide provides a vicinity map of the site and the surrounding area. The subject site is located on the south side of Southwest Barnes Road, within the existing Peter Court Town Square Shopping Center. The site's approximately sixteen point four four acres. The red star on the map indicates the portion of the site where development associated with this application is proposed. This slide identifies the existing onsite uses and the uses in the surrounding area. The subject site is Peter Court Town Square Shopping Center. It's an existing multi-tenant commercial use. The properties to the north and east of the subject site are undeveloped. Highway twenty-six is located south of the site, and Lifetime Fitness is located to the west of the subject site. This slide provides a zoning map of the site and surrounding area. The subject site is zoned commercial corridor, as are the areas located west and south of the subject site. To the north and to the east, the zoning is Station Community Sunset District. Here's a site plan illustrating the entire Peter Court Town Square site. The boundaries of the proposed scope of work are identified with the red dashed line. Here is an enlarged site plan illustrating the proposed scope of work in Phase One. The red bubbles indicate the project design modifications that are associated with the Design Review Three application before you this evening. The blue bubbles indicate previous project modifications associated with approved building permits. Here's an enlarged site plan illustrating the proposed scope of work in Phase Two. Phase Two work is limited to the construction of a new two thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot building on the portion identified, on the portion of the site identified as Pad J. This slide provides an illustration of the existing buildings' elevations, including the new building addition. The proposed facade changes to the previously approved Sunrise Bagels building are highlighted with red bubbles. And here are some additional renderings of those same elevations. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission approves Peter Court Starbucks Phasing, subject to the conditions identified in the staff report. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Are there any questions of staff with regard to the application? I am not seeing any. Thank you. And so now, I think we'll move on to the applicant's presentation. The applicant will have, will now have twenty minutes to present. So please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your name, address, and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer Rinkus. I'm with Basinger Partners Architecture. My address is forty-four Hickory Hill Drive in Thomaston, Connecticut, zero six seven eight seven. And let me see if I can be successful in PowerPoint now. Alright, can everybody see the presentation and my pointer? Okay, great. Success the first time. Erin did a great job, so I won't take a lot of your time tonight. You guys have already seen this project for our prior design review approval. And like Erin mentioned, it's really just to, to phase the two buildings that were approved and the site work associated with it. General work area associated with the approval that we have. This was the approved original site plan. We had an extension on the Starbucks building and drive-through, and then Pad J. Due to just, you know, general leasing and the time it takes to get tenants, they wanted to look at doing Pad J at a later time after they've acquired a tenant. And so we just want to be able to, to build that building at a later date without holding up a C of O for the Starbucks addition we are working on. Phase one, as Erin mentioned, will be, instead of Pad J, we're going to construct a patio with some additional landscaping. So until Pad J comes under construction, that area will be usable. Phase two would be construction of the building itself. All the site work that's shown on this drawing here that's grayed out and hatched is being constructed as part of the Starbucks work that is currently underway, so that will all be completed. Really, Phase Two is just that second building. And, and here, the green arrow just talks, shows you pinpoints where that building, building J is and the area that will get constructed for each phase. So this is just a quick comparison. Phase one, on the right, is what would get built now as additional patio area. Excuse me, allergies. Additional patio area with some landscaping, fully functional space with pedestrian, you know, scale lighting. That space would be fully usable until the time that Pad J comes under construction. And then, in Phase Two, the blue line there is just the, the building walls that would get built for Pad J. A couple of other minor changes, like Erin mentioned, we had a transformer. Coordinating with PGE always takes a significant amount of time and never seems to line up with permitting and land use certainly. And so they came back and finally decided that where we originally had the transformer over here in this island by the drive-through wasn't going to work with some site utilities and things like that, the distances and clearances they needed. So we needed to move that across the drive aisle to make sure we had code-compliant spacing between the lighting going in that, in the island and the, you know, new trees we were putting in. We just had to change the shape of the island, so that was, that was the move there. And we did, in this blue, we added a new tree during permitting. And then, building, there were a couple of very minor building changes to Starbucks. One of them, this one, was really kind of an update. There's an existing door that was going into the Sunrise Bagel space. We originally, in the original proposal, asked to remove that. We've since decided to leave it. So it's actually a door that's already there that we're just leaving. We needed to add it back to the plans. And we're going to extend the new canopy that we're doing over that door so that we make sure we meet weather protection requirements. So this is just a quick elevations showing original approval. Original approval at the top was where we asked for that door here in the middle to be removed. We did do a subsequent DRCL, which modified the canopy at the end of the building. This, this application is really the bottom picture here where we're showing leaving the existing door and adding this new canopy over it for weather protection. And lastly, on the north side of the building, there's some existing electrical boxes, for any better term. Right now, there's a couple of trees there that kind of screen them. Again, coordinating with PGE, they have required clearances to their electrical equipment, and those trees had to come out because they don't meet that requirement, the clearance for PGE. So we did a DRCL and mitigated those trees, but then we were left looking at those electrical boxes. And we wanted to make sure that it was, you know, you could, you could see that facade from the street. We want it to look nice, and so we decided to add a little screen wall element and a canopy to kind of tie in to, to screen the conduits that come out of this gray electrical box. They run up the wall and into the building to the different suites to just kind of screen that and make it look nicer from the street. And as some articulation, we added the screen feature and the canopy to match some of the other work that was proposed and is going on, on that facade. And really, that's, that's the extent of the modifications for this. It's really just the phasing and a couple of minor building changes.
Alright, thank you very much. Are there any questions of the applicant with regard to the application? I am not seeing any. Thank you. We are now at the public testimony portion of this agenda item. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, and those in opposition, and then those neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. So now is time for testimony in favor. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? None. Showing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of the application? Still none. And then, is there anyone who wants to speak neither in favor nor in opposition? Right. So staff has stated that we do not have any public testimony this evening, so we will move right along. And does staff have any final comments?
No, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, so with that completed, I will close the public hearing. And as a standard procedure, I will randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Commissioner Winter?
I think this is a fairly, fairly straightforward application, and I'm complete. I meet, and I meet all the criteria, and I'm in favor.
Thank you. Commissioner Nye?
I agree. I think it meets the approval criteria.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
I think it's a simple update that makes sense for their needs and meets the approval criteria, so I'm supportive.
Thank you. Commissioner, a call? I cannot hear you again, Commissioner, a call if you are speaking. I'm assuming I'm not the only one who can't hear Commissioner, a call, right? Okay. Commissioner, a call, we will come back to you. Commissioner Lawler?
I agree with my fellow commissioners. It meets the criteria for approval.
Okay. Commissioner, a call, do you want to give it one more shot? Unfortunately, it seems like neither your mic nor your camera are working this evening. So I will weigh in and say that I agree with my fellow commissioners and see this is a very straightforward application, appears to meet all the approval criteria. So let's take a vote by roll call when you're, sorry, first I should ask for a motion. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve application project name LU thirty-two zero two three dash zero zero eight three three, Peter Court Starbucks Phasing, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Alright, so now we will take a vote by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay, or if your microphone is not working, maybe you can just try raising your hand for something. Oh. Commissioner, a call is coming in, and then away. Commissioner Lawler? Would you like to, please, to vote? Thank you. Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Nye?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
Commissioner, a call, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm able to join on the phone now. I don't know what's going on with the computer and I. Thank you.
Great.
I could hear you guys, but I've lost even the volume.
No worries. You sound and look great now. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I will vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. The Planning Commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimonies. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in Beaverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. So we will move on to the work session. Our final agenda item of the night is a work session on the Code Maintenance Text Amendment. The order of the work session tonight will be as follows. We'll begin with the city staff presentation, followed by discussion and questions of staff by commission. The Planning Commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes. The commission may ask additional questions of individuals providing comments or staff. We will now begin with the staff presentation presented by Associate Planner Elena Sasson and Planning Division Manager Anna Slatinsky.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me alright? And see the presentation slide as well?
Yes, to both.
Thank you. Once again, good evening Commissioners. My name is Elena Sasson. I'm an Associate Planner with the City of Beaverton, and I'm joined this evening by the Planning Division Manager Anna Slatinsky. And we're here tonight to provide an overview of, as well as ask for your feedback on the Code Maintenance Project and upcoming text amendment to the Beaverton Development Code. But before we get started with the presentation, I'm going to hand it over to Anna to help provide some context for the project as well as framing for this session.
Thank you, Elena. So we're, we're having this work session, and it's a little bit of a different approach than we've often taken with work sessions on text amendment projects with the commission. And it's partly because it's a different kind of text amendment proposal. Some of you will remember the Omnibus text amendments that come through periodically. That, the last Omnibus was in two thousand nineteen. But it's, it's basically a text amendment to fix technical issues with the Development Code. And we, we really should be doing them more frequently. Once a year, maybe even a little bit more often as time goes on, so we can kind of catch up a little bit. But as, as staff works through reviewing land use applications and applying the code, we regularly come across conflicts, errors, vagueness, and other issues in the code that aren't about the policies. It's about how well the Development Code is implementing the policies that have been put in place in the Beaverton Comprehensive Plan and other policy documents. So this text amendment is basically a giant cleanup effort. The, the information provided ahead of the work session and the presentation that Elena is going to bring you through is intended to kind of describe the types of amendments that this overall project will include. But we wanted to have this type of conversation with you. It's not about what are the policy decisions. It's not about what should happen in a particular neighborhood, like for Cooper Mountain. It's really, it's really this, this cleanup effort. We'll never kind of get permanently cleaned up because the code is large and complex, and we are making changes to it when we do implement policy as well, that sometimes we need to go back and adjust to make sure that that policy can actually be implemented in a way that works. So I will, I will, I will stop there and let Elena continue the presentation. But we're going to be a little bit collaborative, so I may jump in again a little bit further along as the conversation proceeds.
Please do. Thank you, Anna. There we go. So to get things started, I wanted to just a really brief overview of what you can expect in this presentation this evening. Staff will provide a really brief explanation of the purpose of code maintenance, the procedural requirements for this type of project. Then, we'll go over and anticipate a timeline and also provide some examples of the, the types of amendments that you would likely see with this type of project. And at the end, of course, we would like to have a discussion with the Planning Commission using some, some questions as prompts. So the purpose of the Code Maintenance Project is plainly speaking to keep the Development Code in good working order. This includes improving the efficiency of development review and internal processes. Maintaining the code also allows us to implement regional, state, and city goals and policies more effectively. And it also enables staff to provide better customer service when, when things are working well. It's also, as Anna mentioned, it's been a really long time since two thousand nineteen, since we've had the last kind of code maintenance project. At the time, we were calling it Omnibus. But the list of items that we've kind of been keeping track of and wanting to, to change and address has just kept growing, so it's long overdue for, for a project like this. So making changes to the Development Code is a legislative amendment, and it's subject to a Type IV procedure. Because the, the proposed changes in the code are broad and they can have potentially an, an effect on, on a variety of different zones and, and the way we regulate structures and different uses, we are going to be sending out a citywide mailed notice, also known as a Measure Fifty-Six Notice. So everyone with an address in the City of Beaverton will be getting notice of this project well ahead of the first hearing, which will be the Planning Commission hearing. The procedure to amend the Development Code also requires that we provide findings to demonstrate how applicable, applicable approval criteria are met. And some of the more noteworthy approval criteria include demonstrating compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, Metro Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, and City Ordinance Requirements and Regulations. For a Type IV procedure, the City Council is the ultimate decision-making authority. However, the process for a Type IV application also requires that the initial review body for these changes is the Planning Commission. So that is part of the reason that we're, we're here today is to, to get your, your, your feedback early as well.
I'm just gonna chime in here on the Planning Commission's role a little bit. You know, when we review quasi-judicial land use applications, like, like the previous application to change the phasing for Starbucks, the Planning Commission is the decision-maker. And Planning Commission's role is to review the materials, review the staff report, and the draft findings, consider the staff recommendation, and then, and then, and then make that decision, you know, with input from public testimony and through asking questions of staff if necessary. For the judicial, excuse me, for the legislative applications, Planning Commission, again, is, is, is providing that review and, and oversight that Planning Commission has as a result of their perspective, working on land use applications and, and these bigger policy questions. But again, council is the decision-maker, and so that recommendation to council is the action that Planning Commission takes. For, for text amendments, of course, they can be very different. Some are very small. Planning Commission has reviewed quite modest and discreet text amendments that amount to changing a few sentences of, of code in the Development Code. Sometimes, a text amendment, it's a part of a much larger, more significant policy project. Cooper Mountain Community Plan is kind of like the, at the biggest end of things, right? It's, it's planning for a large, new urban expansion area in Beaverton, and there are a lot of, a lot of policy goals that are established through that text amendment. In fact, establishing those policy goals is really important. In fact, establishing those policy goals um, is something that we have been working really closely with Planning Commission, with council, with community groups and other stakeholders over many years. Um, so, uh, I just wanna kind of get you thinking about the distinction between the different types of text amendments that you'll see, which have, by the way, the same procedural requirements that are listed here on the screen. But there is a different approach that Planning Commission can take depending on the type of text amendment that they're seeing. And the key feature for the code maintenance text amendment is that it is not a policymaking project. It is a project to um, to make these amendments to the development code, which again, procedurally, we are required to go through these steps. But it's not establishing new policy. It's ensuring that existing policy um, is being implemented in a way that actually works on a practical basis. Elena will talk um, as the presentation goes on about also some requirements of state law that we're proposing to be implemented through this text amendment. But it's not every requirement of state law. We've kind of um, uh, seen the opportunity to implement some aspects of state law that is already consistent with Beaverton polit- policy decisions. Um, and so the, this, this code maintenance text amendment, um, staff believes is an appropriate vehicle for making, making those amendments as well. So, just, just wanted to kind of um, uh, help you calibrate your review. The ultimate proposal is going to be very lengthy. We're probably going to be proposing changes to every single chapter of the development code. A lot of them are gonna be kind of tiny. Some of them are gonna be more words getting changed, but all of them are intended to be pretty policy neutral. Um, and so when you're reviewing, you really wanna kind of be scanning and looking for things that might jump out to you as being things which might create unintended consequences or not be implementing the policy in the way that, um, in the way that they should be. Um, but Planning Commission does not have the, the responsibility to do like a copy edit kind of, um, kind of review um, of that proposal. So we, we can talk about this more um, to help kind of clarify if you have any further questions on this aspect of the presentation. Um, but just wanted to kind of get you thinking about um, how different text amendments call for um, a different kind of approach from Planning Commission specifically as you're considering the staff report, the staff recommendation, and ultimately the recommendation that the commission um, wishes to make to City Council.
Thank you. Uh, before we get into some of those examples, just wanna quickly go over the anticipated project schedule. Um, so staff began work on this project um, in earnest kind of earlier this year. And um, we started really by evaluating that long list of um, desired and, and some required code amendments um, that have been accumulating over the last, last few years. And this initial draft has been shared with our whole planning team, um, who review and implement this code the most. So it's a, it's a really high priority and big goal of ours to make sure that staff is engaged early and often as they're kind of the experts in, in, in the code. Um, we're currently in the second phase of the project during which we'll be sharing the project with others, including the Planning Commission, BCCI and city councillors. However, this project will not include a robust public engagement effort as the changes to the code, as Anna just explained, are, are really intended to be minor or improve the implementation of existing um, previously approved policies. Or in some cases, changes that are just required by, by the state. In the next phase, phase three, staff expects to finalize the proposed changes and share them with the Planning Commission ahead of the, the public hearing. And we do have a question, um, that kind of tries to get at the, the details of that specific date later on. And in the last phase, um, th- this is when the public hearings will occur. So July tenth is our anticipated um, Planning Commission hearing date. And then finally, in uh, September, we are expecting to go to City Council. Uh, the proposed amendments span over the, the entire development code as, as we've mentioned and, and probably touch on every single chapter. Um, but generally speaking, they can be put into four different or, or main categories. Um, these categories are amendments that implements, implement state law, amendments that aim to fix current code that just doesn't work or could work much better with a few tweaks. There are also those amendments that are follow-up to uh, previously approved larger projects. Um, and lastly, there are minor kind of miscellaneous changes that don't really fit well into the other three categories. So the first type of amendment is that which is a result of changes in state law. And to ensure that um, our code is in compliance with state law and administrative rules, um, these are changes that are being brought forward in, in response to those changes at the state level. Um, an example is House Bill Thirty-Three-Ninety-Five, um, which requires that local governments allow affordable housing, including as, as part of a mixed-use kind of development in all commercial zoning districts. Right now, our commercial zones do allow for some, for some housing, not explicitly a, affordable housing, but um, a few different types. In some cases, a conditional use permit is required for the housing. So, so part of the changes that are gonna be proposed in response to this house bill is looking at um, Chapter Twenty more closely, specifically the, the use table for the commercial zones, um, as well as Chapter Sixty, because the other part of this house bill is that we have to apply the same type of um, process and, and regulations that we would in a comparable residential zone. Um, so all of the details, and I should say this for kind of all of the examples that we've brought forward, um, not only in the presentation, but also in the memo, um, that was provided to the commission ahead of time. We don't necessarily know at this point what the solution is going to be. It's just intended to provide an example of the things that are on the list and, and that we're, we're considering. Um, the other type of amendment is fixing things that just don't work or, or could work better. Um, this includes changing existing code language that is either challenging and practical or just impossible to implement. Um, this also may include adding definitions or changing definitions that will help implement regulations. An example of this, um, and I apologize if this is, if this is difficult to see or to understand, I'll try and kind of walk through this, um, this information on the screen. But one of the things that has been coming up a lot recently in our, in our development review are our lighting standards. The current lighting standards work fine for um, large sites that you have a lot of space between um, the building and circulation areas and the edges of the property, um, because essentially what happens is that it allows that, that space in between the circulation areas and buildings provides enough, um, enough area for the lighting levels to taper down to the required minimum lighting level, which is zero point five, which you can see on the screen here, while also providing the minimum lighting level on, on, on the site as required in circulation areas. Essentially, that is a very technical way of saying that as we're seeing kind of more denser development, where property lines or buildings are closer to the property lines or more complex sites that might consist of a lot of different lots and tracks and there are a lot of property lines involved. It is becoming increasingly challenging to meet the minimum lighting level. Oftentimes, that's one point zero foot candle while also um, coming down to zero point five at the property line. So this is just an example of the type of thing that is, you know, over time has, has become um, difficult to implement as, as development in the city changes. And um, as we are starting to see kind of more uh, denser development as well. The other type of amendment is a, our, our follow-ups uh, to correct, to correct uh, previous projects. So for example, um, a recent project that the commission may remember is the Housing Options Project. Um, so although that is a project that was brought forward not too long ago, it wasn't until we started to implement some of those new regulations and standards that conflicts or issues or, or challenges became evident. And so, um, there will be a, a, a number of, of changes associated with previous projects that we've just realized aren't working the way that we may have intended them to, and so are, are trying to fix. An example of this is um, specifically related to the Housing Options Project. Um, with those code changes, we created three new applications. The Single Detached and Middle Housing Design Review, one, two, and three, three different types. And uh, one of the thresholds for the type one application is that uh, this, this type of design review is required for building additions for single detached and, and middle housing uh, development. But what we started to notice is that a lot of applications were coming in for decks on single detached dwellings. And that's because of the way that this threshold is written. It uses the word building addition or words building addition. And the definition um, of, of buildings in the development code is so broad, it's basically anything that's erected above ground. And therefore, decks are considered building additions. So again, not sure what the solution is here, but I don't, you know, there's, there's a case to be made that, that possibly not the intent of the Housing Options Project. Um, and so it's worth revisiting, uh, whether or not we want to keep this threshold as is, or maybe could tweak it a little bit. And lastly, um, there are minor miscellaneous changes. So, um, some holdovers from previous code, code that's no longer applicable or has been replaced, um, or fixing conflicts with the development code and other regulatory documents such as the Engineering Design Manual. An example of this kind of change, you don't need to see all of the, the really small font here on the screen. I apologize for that. But um, this is just a, a snapshot of our final land division application. And the issue for this particular application is that the threshold mentions legal law determination, but the approval criteria, the second or the second arrow down, does not include a legal law determination. It mentions every other application that's mentioned in the threshold, but it doesn't mention legal law determination. So a simple fix would be just adding legal law determination to that section, which will help alleviate the confusion we've been um, encountering. And with that, staff would like to open it up for discussion and questions. Um, we have these kind of four questions here to, to prompt the discussion, but any feedback you have is, is very valuable and helpful. Um, and maybe we can just kind of go down the list with um, and start with, with question one. Um, so we know this is gonna be a lot of information as, as Anna mentioned. And um, we wanna be mindful of that and, and give the Planning Commission more time to review. And so the question is, um, how far in advance would the commission like to see uh, the materials before the public hearing on July tenth?
Would anyone like to start out? Commissioner Winter?
Well, I know this is gonna sound kind of cute, but in all seriousness, yes, so that's contingent upon the size of the document that we receive. Oh, if you can't give you definitive answer or even a ballpark without knowing whether it's gonna be five pages or fifty or two hundred and fifty pages, so.
Yeah, I mean.
So you're gonna, you're gonna touch every chapter, then.
We're gonna touch, we're gonna touch every chapter. Um, I don't know the number of pages, but uh, it would not surprise me if there were amendments to more than a hundred pages of the development code. Um, again, just because, you know, for example, um, sometimes um, making a correction that is to one word may need to be made in multiple places in the document, right? So, um, it's not a rewriting of the code by any means, but the nature of these technical corrections are that there are many of them spread throughout the code. So it, there will be a lot of pages of the development code um, that uh, include text that's proposed to be amended for this project.
Again, the more even though they're, they're tiny amendments, and I understand that a hundred would be difficult. Tough for us, tough for me to get a sense of how many pages back other than given this fact that, or given, you've touched on the fact that it's gonna be every chapter. There's a lot of chapters. There's, I know there's a lot of minor corrections and things like that, but that's as close as I can get. I think the next question is probably gonna be.
Commissioner Winter, your audio is kind of going in and out a little bit. It might be when you're turning your head. I'm not, I'm not totally sure.
I, I would suggest like on, if the staff report's fifty pages, like we might want a week or two, if it's a hundred, you know. I, for me, it's like, it's kind of based on the length of the staff report. Like, I'm not gonna go through every clerical change. Um, I'm really gonna be looking for the sub, you know, more things like what you were talking about with the deck, you know, where there's more of a potential discussion topic. Um, so I'm hoping not to get into further questions, but it's organized in a way that we can filter through that way.
Commissioner Lawler?
Yeah, I think the uh, how far in advance is definitely plays into the organization and the explanation of the materials. Because I think the way you organize the memo to us, to me is very easy to say, oh, well, that's state law. You know, not a whole lot of discretion there versus maybe some other factors like the lighting thing may, may prompt more discussion or thought. And what your, you know, ultimate solution is. So I guess to me, if we have, you know, it, it kind of as was mentioned earlier, as the staff report gets longer or the whole entire report gets longer, maybe think about a, an extra week for every hundred pages or something like that, you know? Seems like if it gets to be like two hundred and fifty pages, like three weeks in advance, I think would be um, just a good ballpark uh, goal for getting a staff report, so everybody could kind of mull it over and get through it.
Commissioner Winter?
On, on question number two, organization, if, if there's any way that, following up on what Terry said, there's any way to like break it up so that you can get some of the stuff that's easier out faster? And so that we flow through that or save it or just the opposite? Hit us with the heavy steps if you have longer to bruise that and think about that. That's up to you, which way you wanna approach it, but I, I, I think there's an opportunity here to stage it.
I think the tricky part about staging it is that, um, you know, until the staff report is finished, there's always the possibility that we'll need to go back and tweak something that we've already given you. So I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit leery of giving you say, well, here's the legislative changes section three weeks in advance and then here's the, you know, here's the uh, really small tweaks thing two weeks in advance. Uh, because again, it's that, it's those overall materials that are helpful for review. Um, but we hear you that you wanna make sure that you have um, plenty of time to review what's likely to be a longer document. Um, and also that having an organization that maybe is categorizing the different amendments is helpful to help you kind of prioritize your attention as you're reviewing the materials.
Uh, I'll just add one more thought. As far as giving us a complete document all at once, these application, every application since beginning time has come in. This is probably the first application we've had that hasn't had a change come to us on, on Wednesday of the meeting. So, change orders, whatever you wanna call it, a day or two before, or four days before is not something we're not able enough to do. That's it, I'm done.
Commissioner Lawler, your hand is up. Is that from before or do you have a new comment?
I will lower my hand.
Commissioner Glenwinkle?
Um, I agree with every, with everybody. Um, I just wanted to add in terms of organizing, if there's a way to um, categorize, I guess, like you're saying, the small clerical stuff that we really don't need to spend the time on versus the unintended consequences type changes, that's where we wanna really spend more time and have conversation about. So I, I don't know how it will look when it's given to us, but if there is a way to categorize it so that we can skim past the stuff that you really don't need our input on, um, then that'll help us to know how to spend our time. And if there's any way to And if there's any way to to kind of ask questions in advance so that we know what kind of feedback you're looking for when we go through our review, that would be helpful because without the context of what it is you want to know, it's hard to just read through, you know, anywhere between 50 and 250 pages of document.
Yeah, understood, understood. Certainly, if staff, if there are questions that staff would like to pose to the commission or portions of the text amendment that we want to highlight for your attention, we can certainly do that. We also, though, are, of course, as with any project, while the commission is reviewing those advanced materials, we very much welcome and encourage any questions that you might have to share them with staff ahead of time and immediately so that we have an opportunity to respond, whether it's responding directly or whether it's responding by preparing preparing some responses for presentation during the hearing. Either way, it is really helpful. You can feel very free to, if something doesn't, isn't clicking for you or not making sense, if you have these questions, we encourage you to share those. In this case, with the project manager, who is Elena, so that so that everyone feels kind of ready to have the conversations that they might want to have when the hearing, when the hearing date comes.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Any other comments?
I guess I just
I think it's a great idea to have the omnibus rename and come at us more than once every five years. Well, I've always wondered why it took so much. Because we'd always have things that we used to beat on the diocesan voice, throw things out and say, well, let's change that the next time we do an update. Let's change that the next time we do an update. It'd be forever before we did an update. I forget what we were talking about when we had the conversation. So I think it's a great idea to have.
Yeah, the intention is actually to kind of roll over and start another code maintenance project right after this one. We may, we'll have them as frequently as we can until we get a little bit more caught up. And then I think annually is probably a good cadence. The reality is that we've had big projects that are taking up staff time. And then also the same staff that are doing the omnibus or code maintenance are usually the folks that are reviewing land use applications. So since we don't control when those land use applications come in, there can be a little bit of a stop and start dynamic at hand for for these kinds of efforts.
Ever enough time.
Anyone else? I think that is it. Right. I know that we, I mean, we started with question one, didn't really get it formally go over questions two and three, but we definitely touched on them. So should we just formally move on to question two? Does that work? Or do you guys feel like you're you're tapped out?
Well, I I kind of have a question back to you. I think about text amendments, they usually go chapter by chapter. But I think what makes more sense to me is the way you've organized it in your memo here where you kind of present the summary, what you're proposing. And that may be where you could you could add questions for Planning Commission, maybe in the proposed change or explain why you're proposing a certain change versus other options. And then the discussion, but it, you know, it may include changes to multiple chapters, you know, Chapter 40 and Chapter 90. Will that present a problem in your staff report when you are mixing and matching? When you're when you're doing changes by topic rather than by chapter? Because I think the the topic to me is much more easy to understand.
So it's always, it's always in danger of being a somewhat cumbersome document. So and I I I hear the feedback from Planning Commission, and I actually tend to agree that having a table that helps group things by topic can be helpful. We might still provide a kind of sequential, chapter by chapter organization of red lines essentially, so that there's that version of it as well. But we'll we'll give some thought to how to make it the most kind of coherent way to to portray the changes, to make sure that they are both transparent for anyone who's looking for something in particular and organized in a way that is helpful for Planning Commission's review.
And and I think the public as well.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think I agree with Anna in terms of we need to give this more thought. One thought that just immediately comes to mind is a possible solution being not having as many categories. So rather than having four categories, just having two, like the the clerical kind of changes, the required changes, and maybe those that requires additional thought and consideration and question. So that might be kind of an easier format to to work with. So, but yeah, we will, we will think about that in greater detail and and hopefully come up with with something that works for the commission, staff, and and the public as well.
I would also just remind the commission that while we have scheduled one hearing for this project and we will be providing hopefully robust, easy to navigate materials in advance, further in advance than we usually do. If necessary, the commission can also choose to continue the hearing to to a future date to have more discussion if that's needed. So that's, you know, that's always a possibility for any hearing. And we don't need to make the decision ahead of time. But I I think that the commission should kind of feel reassured that if they need more discussion, then can happen in one in one Planning Commission meeting, that that's okay. That that can that can happen at a future meeting date. And it's it's it would be reasonable for that to happen when we have a when we have a lengthy, when we have a lengthy proposal. And that said, I also wouldn't assume that it necessarily would be needed. It really is going to depend on how 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 much of the proposal Planning Commission wants to discuss.
Also, just the just a thought on presenting or sending the material over. If those changes can be like indexed, this is the change, go on page this. If it's really 200 pages or 150 pages with little notes or the changes are, you know, that's very helpful to be strategic about reviewing that material.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner, and call. I did want to acknowledge the fact that we did receive feedback from from the commission. Last time we had a large project come before you with a lot of information. And so we've not lost track of that feedback and are hoping to implement some of those kind of tips and and requests about, you know, pagination and adding bookmarks and maybe even, you know, setting reminders, sending out reminders to the commission about, you know, the approaching date. So we heard those things and and definitely intend to to implement as as many as possible. Thank you.
And as always, if commissioners have thoughts or questions that pop up later tonight, tomorrow, in future weeks, let us know. Go ahead and reach out to Elena or myself with additional thoughts. And it's not, it won't be too late to to share those additional thoughts and ideas.
Are there any other questions from commissioners or want to discuss any further? Okay, it is time to allow for public comments on the code maintenance text amendment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? Staff, it shows that we have no one, so we don't have any public comment tonight. So with that, that is the end of this evening's meeting. And we are now officially adjourned at 7:29 PM.
Have a good night. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.